Well, I'm working on my stuff. See, I live on a...
Oh, you do?
I'm in the middle. I read about two news articles.
Are you going down in section of the...
No, no, I was... But it's like...
They were calling back.
They're already getting ready for a little bit of traffic. Six AM tomorrow already.
Maybe so.
I was gonna say, today they have...
Well, I'm working on myself. See, I live on a...
Oh, you do?
I'm in the middle.
I read about two news articles.
Are you going down in section of the...
No, no, I was... But it's like...
They're already getting ready for a little bit of traffic.
Six AM tomorrow already.
Maybe so.
I was gonna say, today I'm here.
Yeah.
It's gonna go there, right?
It's loud and fine for seven.
Five to seven.
You change everything to snow.
Give it more.
Do you want me to announce?
Well, I guess we'll get started. I want to thank Bud Sweet and Dave Trevasani for joining us today for a update on our parking system. This is obviously more of an informal meeting. This is typically our caucus that we normally have in the back, but because of the technology for to have the slideshow and any interest from the public, we decided to have it out here. So the floor is yours, and we'll look forward to hearing the presentation.
Great, thank you. As we agreed, this is our first quarterly meeting of 2019, so again, thank you for your time. As we have in the past, I'd like to give you an update on both the capital improvement program that's ongoing and the financial performance update for the system in total. Let's start with the capital improvements update. Happy to report that the Linden Street Garage Elevator upgrade is complete. It has taken way longer than we had anticipated, and it was a bit painful with it just got a lot more complicated than we had anticipated, but it is now in service and operational. So we're pleased to report that, and we'll be closing out that with the contractor here in the next week or so. The multi-garage program, which is a larger program, most of that work is being done in Linden, as you know, some in Casey. It's been under construction since early October. On schedule, maybe slightly behind schedule, you know, due to some weather, and we agreed to push some of the items back, just maybe a few weeks, just to accommodate the traffic and the weather. Some of the highlights there, the newer portion of Linden is essentially complete. It's some concrete repair work there. The electric work has started in Linden. The painting is about 75% complete. The type of paint that they use is not impacted by the weather, so I think that's a good sign. The demo of the helix, which is a big part of the job, along with the old portion, which is what the engineer calls the post-tension portion of the garage, which is, we're really anxious to get that started because that's really where the heavy work is going to be done. That's going to start next month in March. So we'll know a lot more then, once they start opening up the floors in that garage, as to how we're doing with the estimates that we had put together. We're confident, things are on budget at the moment, and just again, on schedule, we may be a couple of weeks behind. So really, all in all, it's going really good.
David, here we can, you started to mention the helix. Now, the plan for that is to take the upper...
Just the upper...
Two floors of the helix off?
The upper top level, so it'll be, it won't go to the roof any longer, it'll come to the next level down.
Okay, so that's, only the roof will be impacted by that.
Right, that's correct.
But you'll still be able to get up to the roof if you have to through the garage itself?
Yes. Actually, what we're doing is, as the garage was laid out originally, it had the helix that got you all the way up and then back down, but because the helix won't allow you to get access to the garage, you were able to park on both sides. If you drive up, you had angle parking on both sides. What we've done to accommodate parking on the upper levels is we removed parking on one side of each level, so to make two-way traffic in those aisles. So the answer to the question is yes, we'll still be able to use those and still be able to park there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So we're just gonna go from one-way traffic to two-way.
Because the issue never was the stability of the upper floors of the garage, it was always the helix.
Correct, correct. The only reason for even thinking about taking down the upper two floors was just the capacity.
Right.
It was, they weren't needed at the time, and I think the thinking now is, we'll still use them, we'll just have lower number of spaces, but structurally, they're fine.
Okay.
It's just the helix is where the problem was.
That makes a lot of sense.
Thanks.
And what's the work that's gonna be done on the other section of that garage?
Of the Linden garage?
Yes.
The older portion, similar work, concrete repairs, structural repairs, and the like, and that'll start in March.
Okay.
The only other big piece that started is, actually, it's almost completed, is the vehicle barrier system in Casey. That garage did not meet code, so as you go on up, if you've been in Casey, you see there's like wire, you know, wire barrier system, that did not meet code. So if you went through today, you'll see a much more substantial steel barrier system all the way up through the garage, so that now that it meets code. So we're actually pleased with the construction, the team, and really pleased with the way things are going. So far, so good. On the On Street system, the procurement consultant is currently under contract. ABM has secured the services of Walker Consultant. Their role will be to help prepare the design options for the new system. Put a team together, which obviously includes the city team. They'll really manage the procurement process. So they will prepare the RFP, they will guide the process, and the RFP will actually be issued through the city's normal procurement procedures, and it'll be publicly bid. So once we, as a team, it'll probably take, eight weeks is the guess, that the team will work on the design options, and then the RFP will be published, and we will look for contractors to actually provide and install the new system. I know separately from that way, and that the transportation study is underway, and that RFP is being prepared, and obviously, those things need to work together, but they're being procured independently.
Now, part of the On Street system we talked about, as part of our legislation, was to get a residential parking program for downtown.
That is correct.
Where are we at on that initiative?
Bud, you wanna go ahead?
We've had a number of discussions with ABM, our operator, in terms of crafting a system as to, you know, where they would park, where the actual downtown residents would park. By garage, there'd be certain garages, not others, really focusing on those garages that are under capacity. The pricing discount, the rules of engagement, so on and so forth. So we are at a point now where we want to have a meeting with the downtown property owners and landowners to discuss what we're proposing, to get their feedback. In fact, we're gonna bring that up tomorrow, not tomorrow, Wednesday, if we have a Scranton tomorrow meeting, to have a specific meeting, a date on that. So we'll ask the participants of that meeting who have been involved in this from the beginning to attend a meeting of that sort.
Okay.
And as Bud said, we have not, we're talking about options, and so we, rather than, so we'll have something to roll out, we think, here for this group to look at, maybe in a month, or either next month or the month after. It's likely to consist of a percent discount off of normal rates. We'll need to direct the parkers, as Bud said, to specific areas within the system. So if you're a residential parker, you're not, you won't be able to just park wherever and get the discount, because of the way that we finance this with tax-exempt bonds, we'll have to direct them to the underutilized parts of the system. So that's probably gonna be certain garages and certain floors of garages if you want the discount.
Okay.
So that's how it will work. What Bud is referring to, and we want to get some feedback from the residential developers on procedures, because once we roll this out, we want to make sure we're being most efficient about, because if you're gonna have a residential program, you want to make sure that you can determine if that person's a resident, and how do you do that, and do we work through the landlords, or do we work with the individuals? So those are details we kind of want to flesh out, as Bud said, with the downtown owners, so that we can then have something very specific we can discuss.
Okay, thanks.
So we're really excited about the On Street system. We think that's gonna make a big difference, and looking forward to getting that rolled out and discussing the options with the consultant. The other part of the capital program is the Electric City Garage Construction, and I think, as you're aware, we don't control that. We will, as part of our lease on the Electric City Garage, the Electric City owner is responsible for those improvements. We have been working with the owner, they were doing it in pieces, so we had approved the top deck. The owner has submitted a scope for the balance of the project. That has been, actually, that was in pretty good shape, and so we made some comments, and we're going back and forth. Desmond is working with their engineer, we're going back and forth on what that looks like, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that finalized in the next number of weeks, and hopefully, construction will start in earnest, and, you know, when the weather starts to turn. The thing that is under contract currently is the Spruce Street Elevator went down, and it is currently under contract, not by us, but by the owner, to have that upgraded and Some financial highlights, we've just finished, as you know, with the 2018 year. We finished better-than-budget by $65,000 net operating income, which is revenue less expenses. And as required in our bond covenants, we're required to meet a 1.4 coverage. We ended the year at a 1.42. So tight, but nonetheless, we were very happy and pleased that we were able to meet, you know, meet the coverage and the performance of our system. Now, what we have is, here's the detail, we have now two years, or ABM does, has two years of operations under our belt. I think we feel pretty good about, you know, knowing what it's gonna cost to operate the system, what it's gonna cost to run the system, and what our revenue stream looks like now that we've had the mall system in place for the last, since March. So we really have some good data now. What you're looking at here is the 2018 year end. On the far left is the December, period December. The center column is year-to-date, which is the end of the year, and the variance is the difference between the actual year-end and the budget year-end, and you'll notice the budget year-end is the same as the budget, which is on the far right of the slide. And you'll notice here that total gross revenue was better-than-budget by a little over $400,000. It's a little bit misleading. We did have an insurance claim during the year, you know, it was about $160,000, so it makes the numbers look a little bit better than they actually were, but nonetheless, a good year. And again, you'll notice that, you know, most of our line items on validations and monthly revenue are actually better, were better-than-budget. Where we missed the mark is really the coins. You'll notice that that's below budget by almost $170,000. That's the part of the system that really needs to be upgraded, so we're hopeful that this year we'll be able to get the new On Street system in place, and that will stabilize, and we'll really know where those numbers are gonna perform, you know, more longer term. So that's been the weakest part of the system to date, going back since we've taken over in 2016. On the expense side, we were a little worse-than-budget by about $300,000. Some of that's due to expenses due to the insurance claim again, and some of that is due to utilities and added labor that we hadn't budgeted for, just to try to get the new mall system up and running. We really had to have people at the gates where we hadn't anticipated, so that was the reason that we were a bit over-budget on the expense side. So overall, $65,000 better-than-budget on that operating income. We were actually pretty pleased with that, and again, we met our coverage of 1.42. I think I'll stop there for just a second. Do you have any questions on the year-end, the year-end numbers?
Just one, the revenue special, was that the insurance claim?
Yes. Revenue special is two things. It's the insurance claim, and it's reimbursement of the insurance. We, as part of the arrangement, the city was in a better position to carry the property insurance, so that insurance is paid for by the city, and then a portion of the liability is reimbursed. So that, we carry it in the expense line, but we also carry it on as a revenue because it's reimbursed. That's where those two line items are.
Thank you.
Commercial, yeah. Commercial liability, right.
The commercial liability insurance per the concession agreement is reimbursable at 69% of what we pay.
So moving right along, some highlights from the 2019 budget. Now that we have two years really of operations under our belt, really two and a half years, but really two years, where we really, really understood, you know, 2016 was really a total startup year. 2017 was better, and now I think we have a better handle on the budget. So 2019 budget was based off 2018 actuals. So I think you saw that 2018 compared to 20, the budget performed really pretty well and came on on-budget. So 2019 budget was based on the 2018 actuals. And just some highlights, revenue total, 4.35 million, a little bit lower than 2018 actual. Again, the On Street system's a little suspect. We're really not, we would have loved to be able to budget for new On Street revenue once the new system goes in place. We're a little uncomfortable with that, not knowing the timing of when that's gonna happen. We think that's gonna get better in 2020. And the insurance claim, obviously, was something we didn't anticipate, so we budgeted a bit less in revenue in 2019 than in 2018. No increases in rates. The rates have been constant since 2016. The rates, based on the schedule and the concession agreement, don't get raised until 2020. So next year, we'll be looking at increasing rates to, is consistent with the concession agreement, and it'll be the first time in four years. Expenses, 2.23 million in expenses, a little bit lower than 2018, again, partly because of the, we have a better handle on utilities this year, and we won't have the expenses from the insurance claim. So NOI and coverage, we expect a 1.39 or a 1.4 coverage. You know, this was a tight year. You know, we haven't had rate increases, the On Street system has been off, the revenue from the On Street system has been off, and so this was, this budget was really a, you know, a rather tight budget for those reasons. You know, but we, you know, but we made it work, and we're gonna have to watch things pretty close in order to make sure we meet that 1.4 over the course of the, you know, over the course of the year. January numbers were just completed. We'll show you those maybe next quarter when we come in, but the January numbers, which I just saw today for the first time, came in on budget, so we felt pretty good about at least the first month of the year. The next slide is the detail. Again, on the far left is the year-end, where we ended up in 2018. The center column is the 2019 budget. You can see that we really are having, and the far right is the variance, and you'll see that we're running the numbers pretty close in 2019 budget, based against 2018 actuals, except for the revenue special, and again, that's due to the insurance claim, which we don't anticipate in 2019. So overall, we expect 4.3 million in revenue, 2.23 million in expenses, and net operating income of 2.1, which obviously, we'll use mostly to go to debt service, and then capitalize our reserve accounts, as per our concession agreement, setting aside monies for reserves for operations and reserves for capital, so that when we need to make improvements that are unanticipated in the future, we'll have some of those dollars available to do That's all I have. Any questions?
The grant that we approved, I know there was some information coming from the state. Did you ever get that approval from the state to use the money for capital improvements as you anticipated?
We, we're taking it on a case-by-case. We have monthly meetings with the state consultant and reviewing what we're calling the change order log. What we're, the process that we're undertaking is we're getting prices for work that we would hope to do or would like to do, and we're working with the city team. Some of that work involves making improvements to the top two floors in Linden, which we did not anticipate, for example. Doing some work in the commercial spaces to get them up to snuff, so that we can be in a better position to rent them. We'll know more, I think, next month. Once we get into the demolition of the helix, and once we get into the major part of the reconstruction of the old part of Linden, I think we'll know where, you know, you never know when you open up the floor, what you're gonna find, and I think we have good numbers, but I think that we'll know more in a month, and then we'll be able to make some of those decisions as to what dollars we have to do things like upgrade commercial space, we have security cameras in the budget, those kinds of things that were not budgeted for under the original grant, but we're hoping to do with the additional dollars that were made available last year.
Yeah, I know security, obviously, is always a big concern, and I know that that's part of the phase that you're talking about would be the next part, you know, if you end up getting approvals.
That's exactly right.
So when you get done with the helix, and you get some of this construction done, so your plan is, see where you fall as far as your current budget, if you're on budget or not, and then go back to the state and say, okay, now we'd like to do this, this and this?
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
Yep, and we're doing, some of those things we're doing that we have to do, electrical upgrade, you know, things that came up during the stage of the process we're in now, but the bigger items, yeah, we'll make decisions on those probably in a month or two.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? We thank you for coming in, and we appreciate the update, and although the public only sees a little bit every once in a while, I want to thank you for your openness with any questions that council has regarding parking issues. You've always been very responsive to us, so we certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Great, thanks for having us.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
One thing, having moved downtown since 1999, and driven until I got my car truck up, parking garage, parking the Linden Street, I don't drive, I don't want to talk about that. I have no objection to talking to...
Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight for the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Dono?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes. Actually, hold that thought, I think there's going to be a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table item 7A.
Second. And the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, tax assessor's results report. Poor hearing date held January 30, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, check received in the amount of $21,780 from Commonwealth of PA for 2016 Act 47 grant reimbursement for 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3C, minutes of the Lackawanna County Land Bank meeting, held January 11, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3D, agenda for the Lackawanna County Land Bank meeting, held February 8, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Do any council members have announcements to make?
I have one. The first meeting of the newly-formed Downtown Scranton Residents Association will take place Wednesday, February 20th, at 6:00 PM at the Leonard, at 335 Adams Avenue in Downtown Scranton.
A couple announcements. Colts buses will run on Snow routes tomorrow, Tuesday, February 12. Share ride services will operate under the implement weather policy found on Colts Snow Route page, picking up essential trips only. With weather conditions expected to worsen throughout the day tomorrow, please check the Colts website, Facebook page, and news stations for updates on Colts service. Next Monday, February 18th, the city hall will be closed in observation of President's Day. Council's next meeting will be held Monday, February 25th. DPW crews will be working next week on the 18th. Refuse and Red Recycling will be on schedule next week.
Fourth order, citizens' participation. Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, resident and taxpayer. In fact, I filed my federal and state taxes January 28th, and last Friday, I paid my real estate tax, so I can now drop dead with a clear conscience. What is the status of the Arcata study? One more time.
We are meeting, well, Councilman Dono and myself are meeting with members of the administration with Arcata next week to get a overview of the draft. At that meeting, we'll be discussing our work session with them, which will follow, I'm sure, within the next week or two after that.
You know, this has been two years in the making, so it should be one beautiful study.
That's right.
I want to remind everybody that it's still Black History Month, and anybody who did not have a chance to see Glennis John's Black Scranton Project on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, if you go to blackscranton.com/events, I'm sure you'll find information on when it will be open to the public. And you could still get Sandra Burgett Miller's book, Tell 'Em, Story of Her Great-Great-Grandfather Escaping From Slavery to Waverly. It's in the Library Express bookstore, also at the marketplace at Steamtown, second floor. Speaking of snow and tonight's storm, who is responsible for cleaning and keeping the storm drains refuse-free and clear of all obstructions?
DPW should be doing it.
Okay, because I remember the last time we had a significant snowfall, followed by freezing rain, followed by rain. A lot of corners downtown had little lakes, okay? And obviously, the plows had pushed the snow over those storm drains, and then it got packed in with ice, and then it got covered over by lakes. For many people, it's not an issue, but a lot of your downtown residents use walkers, or they're in those motorized little chairs, or otherwise, you know, they're unable to move around the downtown, and that went on for days before the sidewalks and the curbs started getting cleaned. So I'm not quite sure, you know, who should be looking at this, but I'm hoping that this event tonight and tomorrow doesn't lead to another couple of days of people not being able to get out of their apartments and conduct their personal affairs, so I hope somebody watches that, and I hope DPW keeps a handle on it. And they do a good job cleaning the roads, don't get me wrong, but people are not very sensitive, our city isn't very sensitive to the needs of some of the disabled in our city, and keep in mind, they pay taxes too. Tonight's update on downtown parking, and your questions weighing to them about residential parking discounts if possible, I strongly recommend, and I told them this, that they not only get input from the downtown developers who are renovating these apartments for residents, but talk to the residents themselves, because the residents have a whole different viewpoint about downtown parking, as you well know, since you live downtown, than a developer who may not even live in Scranton. I know I parked downtown from 1999 through 2012. My car was vandalized twice in two different parking garages over the years. That was $1,000 out of my pocket, okay, with my deductible. You know, you worry about security. You worry about all those chemicals getting down onto your paint, and occasional chunks of concrete falling on top of your car. Granted, there may be security cameras, but that doesn't do you much good when a bar closes and the drunks decide to vandalize every car in a parking garage. So I told them about this new residential downtown group forming up next week, and strongly recommended that they contact that group and get input from the people actually living downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Oma?
Hello, council. I took off last Monday, like you guys always do, so if you missed me, I just... Last month, Joseph...
hope somebody watches that, and I hope DPW keeps a handle on it. And they do a good job cleaning the roads, don't get me wrong, but people are not very sensitive, our city isn't very sensitive to the needs of some of the disabled in our city, and keep in mind, they pay taxes too. Tonight's update on downtown parking, and your questions weighing to them about residential parking discounts if possible, I strongly recommend, and I told them this, that they not only get input from the downtown developers who are renovating these apartments for residents, but talk to the residents themselves, because the residents have a whole different viewpoint about downtown parking, as you well know, since you live downtown, than a developer who may not even live in Scranton. I know I parked downtown from 1999 through 2012. My car was vandalized twice in two different parking garages over the years, that was $1,000 out of my pocket, okay, with my deductible. You know, you worry about security, you worry about all those chemicals getting down onto your paint, and occasional chunks of concrete falling on top of your car. Granted, there may be security cameras, but that doesn't do you much good when a bar closes and the drunks decide to vandalize every car in a parking garage, so I told them about this new residential downtown group forming up next week, and strongly recommended that they contact that group and get input from the people actually living downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Oma?
Hello, council, I took off last Monday like you guys always do, so if you missed me, I just, last month, Joseph "Pile Chesky," and I don't mean to murder his name, he received a two-year probation for taking $4,500 from three different people for practicing law without a license. Now, somebody tell me why Henry or Mosel took 10 times that amount of our tax money, signed papers for the sewer deal, he practiced law without a license, and he just seems to keep avoiding anything said about this. The man is completely illegal, he's not an attorney, he's not a lawyer, I don't know why this, this doesn't affect the sewer authority deal. I guess, I know there's a federal mandate about all this, but it seems like something could be done about the Chesapeake Bay expense in Harrisburg, but they probably don't want to, it'd just fall on people, be another hundred or so dollars on our taxes. Every morning I read Mr. McKenna's editorial page, I like to see what some of these misfits from all over the country send him. It seems to me there should be people for the area writing in, not people in New York and California and so on. Mr. McKenna seems to favor, I don't know, to get under some, some people, or maybe to get their attention with some of the letters that he prints, they're outrageous, they're evil, vile, but this, last week, he printed another letter from a Scranton resident, Dominic S.A.I.D., something like that, that is a complete anti-Semitic racist letter that has, that no legitimate newspaper should print such evil trash as this. This was outrageous for anyone to see a letter of such hate-filled rhetoric as this man prints. It's a shame people like this are allowed to suck the air in that somebody good could This is the third or fourth or fifth letter I've seen in the paper from him, so it's, it's repentive. I guess, I guess this is what sells newspaper, but to me, there should be no room in our society for people as this, and those that support him. And I'd like to say one other thing, I almost pleaded with council last month to do something about my neighborhood, nobody seems to care, it is just going to pot left and right, Mr. Hitten's office doesn't lift a finger to help. I got, I mentioned, there been a car on a sidewalk for five years, it doesn't make sense why this, this neighborhood is allowed to go to pot. When I bought my house in 94, I think, it was a nice neighborhood, now I got this condemned house directly across the street, every week a man dumps a truckload of junk all over the yard, and the garbage picks it up because they said it contaminates the neighborhood if they don't pick it up. There's no garbage fee on the house, why, why does everybody else have to pay a garbage fee? Somebody's allowed to print, I mean, to put trash, just garbage out there every week and it gets picked up, and I don't, I made more garbage than I have in, in months in every load. I don't know whose fault it is, but somebody ought to put a stop to it. He's removed the condemned sign twice, because I saw him one time, now the lady put another one up last week, it'd probably be gone tonight, because he'd dump another load of trash there between me being here and going home. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
His way. Evening, council, Bob Mullis, Scranton. I don't know if you paid much attention to the past, what went on in Luzerne County with the stormwater, I'd like to see that we head that off at the pass, so to speak, that it doesn't wind up here, let's put it back on government where it belongs. I think this should be a federal issue, I think the federal government should step up to the plate, not go tax the people for stormwater. It's something that we're not creating, it's coming from up above, so I think we need to look in other areas, not put any more taxing expense on our people, especially in this city. Another thing that I think needs to be addressed once and for all is the parking garage at the mall. We put up almost $5 million to Basaliga for his parking garage, and we were to get 500 parking spaces, and if you recall, I went over that with Gahan, when he said he sent a letter, and of course, he never had sent the letter till I raised it up and it was sent later. We were entitled to 500 parking spaces, go back to the original agreement, there was nothing about us going in, getting a ticket stamped, or any of that other nonsense, those are our 500 spaces that we, the taxpayers in the city, gave Basaliga that money, without any restriction. If I want to park my car there all damn day, that's my business, I paid for that space by giving him the loan, and if he can't appear, how would I put it, if he can't adhere to what that deal was, then give us our $5 million back. Enough of the nonsense, that's an ethic violation as far as I'm concerned, because it's unethical that we approve something and yet we do nothing about it. That's our money, those are our parking spaces, I don't care what the heck he did with the parking people and everything else, they live with the deal that was originally drafted. There are spaces, and I want them back, for our people to be able to park as long as they want, whether they work downtown or whatever they do, we don't need to be running around like a bunch of idiots getting tickets stamped. That's his regimentation for people that shop in the mall, we're parking in the mall, we don't need to be compelled to shop in the mall. So I believe that's something that we need to send a letter and get something done about it, and I think Mr. Gahan should take the lead on that, since he was the one going to handle this the past. Sorry he's not here, because I don't like talking behind anybody's back, so I'm right out front here. Next is Hitten, and I'm going to put this on Mr. Gahan again, since he was so emphatically just engrossed in setting up a new ethics program here in the city. He researched it, he spent time with Redding, he did this and did that. Well, Hitten has the coffee shop up in Naug Park, he's a city employee, now it's up to Mr. Gahan to go ahead and file an ethics violation on him, because it's a new ballgame and it's a new set of rules. If we got to play by the ball, so does Hitten and everybody else in this city, as I told you guys from day one, the day you pass that, it's a double-edged sword, you live by the sword, you die by the sword. So I expect those that pushed it to also enforce it, and I want to see that coffee shop returned back out, that it could be publicly bid again, because it's a violation. Another thing that's really annoying is we have an incompetent governor, I think he's the biggest fool God ever put on this earth, that puts a truck ban on commercial vehicles on the interstates. We're in the trucking business, he's going to tell me, that's been driving tractor trailers and trucks for god knows how many, 60, 70 years here, heavy wreckers that go out and open up interstates that we cannot drive on the interstate, but a 16-year-old, or fit kid, or with a new license, or people who never drove in snow, cars that are five inches, six inches off the ground, could drive up and down the interstate, but you take seasoned drivers from Canada, from Colorado, from all over, and tell us we can't drive on our interstates, when we pay a federal highway use tax to use that highway. What he can't get through his head is, it's a federal highway, it's not a state highway, it's a federal highway, funded by federal money, and we pay a federal highway use tax to be on there. So I have filed a suit against Mr. Wolf, and I'm going to hold him accountable, and so is every trucking company in Canada and in the United States, we're going to hold him accountable for treating truck drivers like they're animals, no food, no rest facilities, and zero planning to put trucks somewhere, and the people on the road to take them off. If you take one, you take them all, and you make facilities available, whether it's the arena, whether it's somewhere else, to put somebody there, but this represents, has the problem for us here in Scranton, why I brought it up. These trucks are ordered off the interstate by the state, and they're going to congest our roads in the city that our people can't plow, because they're going to be buried with trucks parked all over the side streets, and then figure out how you open a road. Thank you.
My name is Jay Walsh, I work, I live at 918 Harrison Avenue, Scranton, PA. Did we hear from the mayor lately, does he come to work? Does?
I'm on Tuesday.
Have you met, have you spoken to the mayor since he's been?
I meet with the mayor every Monday morning.
And does he work in his office during the week?
Yeah.
Because it's been very quiet concerning what transpired with him, but he's got a really good lawyer, Paul Walker's an excellent lawyer, he knows when to deal and when not to deal. This past week, the prison guard was found innocent, but he made some serious mistakes concerning committing perjury, and is under consideration of RICO, and his uncle called the court a kangaroo court, and there might have been some ringing going on there, because I know a lot of stuff behind the back scene, the back of the scene, but I don't know whether you guys know it, but you can be held, there's precedent for this, for you being held for civilian detainees, and the case is on the way to the Supreme Court, working at the prison, being paid $5 a day, there is precedent to you guys to be held accountable, I don't know whether personally and professionally, okay? So, I don't know what you know about that, but there's two laws, two law firms coming, coming in, that are major law firms, that are going to basically go after this whole thing, so it's huge. You just can't use civil detainees at $5 a day to work off prison grounds. It's simple.
Mr. Walsh, if you have any questions or concerns about the prison, your best bet would be to direct those to the county commissioners or the prison board.
No, no, no.
Council doesn't have any purview over the county.
You do, because it's in your jurisdiction.
No, it's not.
It, it is in your jurisdiction, it sits on North Washington Avenue in Scranton.
And it's a county function, the city of Scranton has nothing to do with the operations of the prison.
Well, we'll let that go for the lawyers, since you're not one, since I'm not one and you're not one, but I study the law really hard. So, the mayor does come to work, that's nice to hear. So have you decided to come to the rally down in Harrisburg in Washington this week?
No.
No, you're not coming to the rally? Yeah, I know it's all about you, it always is. It's not about the future, it's not about our children, is it? Our grandchildren? Is it? It's not. And it doesn't, and, and it really doesn't matter to you, otherwise. Now, the governor and I are having a little banter, he wants to offer $45,000 a year for teachers, okay, to be in with, and, and I basically said it's a no-starter, I said it's $100,000, I considered higher, but that's my compromise, okay? The next rally after this one is on March 21st, is a spring rally, okay? This one I just wanted to keep to teachers, but the next one is going to be first responders, volunteer fire guys, because they deserve $100,000 a year. We got the money, we got $840 trillion, but you guys didn't know that, did you? Nope. So, last council meeting last week, you made a sort of a complaint about your duties as a councilman, well, you should have checked into what the duties are for the councilman. Yeah, you have to be this function or that function, and, and whatever, and I believe going forward, the best response is to deal with referendums, and that allows you to be a facilitator, okay? You don't have to take the city on your shoulders, okay? There's more than enough people outside, within the confines of the city, highly talented people that have spent a lifetime in work, that are willing to do this, I mean, you see it all the time, you see people volunteering, well, a facilitator wouldn't have to volunteer, they could be in charge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dave Dobson, resident and taxpayer. I'm going to keep on this, once again, if somebody wants to sue, why don't you try, instead of suing over 511 taxes and driving our, maybe even doubling our property taxes, sue for a limit of tax-exempt entities in Scranton. If the state wants to declare it, let the state reimburse us. It's a fairer idea than piling it all onto the same people, we, year in and year out, and ever more increasing. So, Mr. McGovern, you're the leader of the group, think about it, please. Last week, we had a discussion on the Monday holidays, and I don't want to see people stop attending meetings that were elected, or people missing constantly, or more or less having other obligations, but we could always skip the daytime summer schedule and keep them evenings, that would give us four days as a trade-off. Quite frankly, I spent about 30 bucks over at the Parking Authority attending meetings last summer, that's kind of much. It's nice to have the free parking and more or less, it puts an awful dent in your pockets, so if you just don't want to spend that money, I guess the only thing you can do is stay On fifth order, DNE, a little suggestion, I'm all for the lit crosswalks, but how about if all those edumicated people learn how to use them? I had people step out in front of me with a cell phone up to their ear, and they didn't hit the crosswalk button in the dark, coming home from, from council one night, so it would be helpful, it would be helpful if they did that, and it sure would be, what's the point of having them if they're not going to use them, so they, they should advise their students. So they should advise their students and their faculty to please hit the crosswalk button before you step off the curb. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion on vagrant and homeless, a little history of vagrancy. That was a law, and it was overruled by the Supreme Court, that you couldn't put people in jail just because they couldn't show you an address. In Georgia, they used to arrest people during the Great Depression and put them on a chain gang. And the average stay was three years, and you stood a twenty-seven percent chance of not leaving the chain gang alive. You always misconducted yourself. Your term was always increased. And a guy from Jersey got caught down there, and he escaped, and Jersey refused to extradite him back to the chain gang, and it went to the Supreme Court. And that's, that was the ruling on it. So, I mean, we should call them homeless. And another food for thought is that if people are homeless, they live in the moment. They live in that moment. So do I get, if I have five bucks in my pocket, a six-pack of beer, or do I save that five bucks and someday hope to rent an apartment? You know? It's, it's, we have to do something with the homeless situation in this country, and what's been done to date really isn't, really isn't acceptable. I have two articles. I'll probably bring them in next week or the week after. But anyway, it's on department stores, and just stores in general. And they're, half of our retail stores are just squeezing by. They don't make any money, year in and year out. People don't have any money. And then the other article entails eliminating cashiers. So if people can't even have a job in a store as a cashier, where in the heck is the money going to come from? You know? What are we going to let them go homeless? I guess so. Thank you, and have a good night. It's just food for thought.
Thank you.
For stormwater. It was made clear when you had the preliminary, a few preliminary things, that the entire purpose of that study is to set a stormwater fee and give you options for how to do that. What I would really like to know is when are we going to get to the plan for the areas that need help in with stormwater? And how is that going to be prioritized?
Well, first, we have to see this plan and this study, and see what we have out of that, and then that'll be the next phase, of course.
How long is it going to go? I mean, how many, how many?
We meet next meet, next week, and then we'll have a work session after that, and that, and that starts the process.
Another two-year study?
No, I don't expect that at all.
What do you expect?
I expect to move on action as soon as we get through with our draft proposal, our work session, and decisions have to be made at that point.
It's way, way overdue.
Well, absolutely. I don't disagree with you at all.
And when is the police chief going to come and speak to us about the homeless procedure or in the city, and the second chance, and how that is being implemented?
We did have to reschedule. Due to a funeral, we had to reschedule the police chief coming in, but we'll work on rescheduling, and also with the district attorney's office as well.
Trash. I know Mr. Gahn's not here tonight, but I think it is time. We've had several articles in the Times Tribune about county meetings. I don't know who even attends for the city, if it's somebody from DPW or somebody else. But I think we have a major problem coming. If they are going to stop accepting recycling, and the stuff is going to be sent to the, to the trash heap, that's being nice. But what is going to happen to the cost of the dumping fee? Has anybody looked into that?
I did have a discussion with the mayor this morning about the article that you mentioned in the newspaper. Part of what needs to be done on the city's end, on the educational side, is there are people that are putting trash in the recycling bins. Now, that is on us. But at the same time, the recycling center has to work with the city when there's a good faith effort, as far as different items that are recyclable, to work together on that, as we have for twenty years.
But it goes beyond that. I mean, now they're saying, just as Texas for a while back, I brought it up a couple of years ago, they weren't accepting glass anymore because there was no market for the glass. So it was just throw it in the, in the trash. What actually goes in to the recyclables now? I mean, when are we going to, is that going to come out with the trash bills this year? Or is that going to be, has the, has the, have the dynamics changed on what we're supposed to put in?
As far as I know, it hasn't changed at all. This is the first we've heard about it, when we saw that article, that it was becoming a problem with the recycling center, but.
Well, no, there have been several about the county recycle.
Yeah.
Recycling Zarena, I guess, had a, a meeting a couple of months ago. So this keeps coming up. It would be nice to say, okay, we're meeting what we need to meet, and just keep doing what you're doing. But if that's not the case, we need some information on what doesn't go in, what's changed. And again, our mayor, I think it is incumbent upon you people as our, as representatives of the taxpayers, to ask the mayor to make public the search warrant, and specifically what was being looked for. I would expect Mr. Walker to put a nice light on it, but I think we, you give him a lot of money to spend, you give him all kinds of power, and I think we need to know what he's been doing with that, and make our own determination based on what the FBI asked for from the mayor, both in his office and at home. And I think he needs to come forward and do that. He owes that to us. What about the Home Rule Charter? When is that going to come forward?
I want to talk to our solicitor about the mechanism to put that in place, and then we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. In the last couple of weeks, I've been talking to some neighbors of the Mission House. I know they were here in December, and they were having some issues with just some bad activity around, around their neighborhood. So if we could, Mrs. Reed, could we send another letter to Chief Graziano to see if he had a plan, or if he was able to do a step up of police presence in that area from time to time, based on all that information that we sent out in the original email? And also, I don't believe we heard back from Mr. Hinton on our request to see, to make sure the Mission House was, was operating in full compliance. And why the Mission House and other facilities like that are needed in the city, it's also a responsibility of not only us, but, but the facilities themselves to run it correctly. And that's what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to make this a win-win. We want the people in the Mission House to get all the help they need, whenever they need it, but at the same time, be respectful to the community that, that these places are in. And that's kind of what we're trying to go for right here. Also, Ms. Schumacher brought up the rescheduling meeting of Chief Graziano. I did have something I would like to add to that. I know it'll be a good chance we'll have the chief and the DA in the same room. I would like them to bring their opinion on the decriminalization of marijuana, and if they have one. It's something that's been talked about recently. It's been something that's been brought up in the past, and it's been something that done in other cities. So I want to just hear from them. They're the two biggest players in this, and it really doesn't happen without, without their backing and their, I want them to bring their experience to the table, because if there's any two people in the city that have the best of the best insight on that issue, it would be Chief Graziano and DA Powell. And lastly, there's an issue that we've been dealing with for a while on Ferdinand Street and Church Ave. It's just standing water that's been happening. And the residents there are happy that the drain and the sewage issue was fixed with the cleaning out. But we did send a letter way back when to DPW, and it was a milling issue. And it wasn't going to happen this year because, or in 2018, it just, 2018 books were closed on all, all paving. I just want to see if that was planned to get on this year's budget, or if it's not, would it be included? It wouldn't need the full scope of a road paving. It's just basically some milling and some repaving to fix the pitch of that street in order to run the water correctly into the storm drain. And then if we can get a response back, if that's the case, I don't know if it's going to need something from the engineering department, or if it's just a simple fix. But if we can get answers to that, I would appreciate it. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just to respond to a couple of things Marie brought up real quick. With regards to recycling, I think the problem there is you have the same operator that runs the recycling center, that runs the landfill. So it doesn't provide any incentive to the operator to recycle more recyclables. So I think that needs to change moving forward. We have to figure out ways for that to change. With regards to the mayor, I've called on him multiple times to make a statement, and he still hasn't done that. So I agree a hundred percent on that, too. Mrs. Reed, I've gotten a couple of calls about potholes on the bottom of East Mountain Road and Wintermantle Avenue. So would we be able to pass that along to DPW to maybe go up there and patch them up? Myself and Councilman Evans had a meeting with Pendott on Friday regarding the intersection of Pittston Avenue and Orchard Street. Hopefully, we could come to an amicable agreement on that corner, because it is a pretty dangerous intersection, according to a lot of the data that the chief brought along with him. Also, I had a couple of calls about issues with speed of cars coming off of Boulevard Avenue onto Columbia Street in front of Robert Morris. So would you be able to pass that along to Chief Graziano? And just to agree with Councilman Perry, I really do think it's time to have a discussion with the DA and the chief about marijuana decriminalization. I think there's valid points on both sides, but I think it'd be valuable to have that discussion. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Very briefly. On the decriminalization of marijuana, I've been calling for that meeting for quite a while, so I'm very encouraged by the conversation tonight. So hopefully, Chief Graziano and DA Powell will be able to be prepared for that discussion as well. I would like to announce that we will be holding a work session next Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM in city council chambers to discuss the results of the BLIGHT task force. We will go over the multi-placid plan with a goal towards implementation of many of the strategies developed at those meetings. So again, we will be meeting in council chambers Tuesday, February nineteenth, at 6:00 PM for that work session, and that's all I have.
Just two brief items. The homelessness was, was brought up, and I did receive a memorandum from the mayor. This meeting was taking place, the timing kind of got thrown off from some of our meetings, with a couple of items getting changed. But it's been reported that there, there currently isn't a shelter in the city when it, when it gets cold, because of a couple shelters that did close. So this memorandum states that Weston Field will be available for use as a homeless shelter by Keystone Mission in adverse weather conditions when the temperature is below fifteen degrees and when they anticipate having to shelter twenty or more individuals. The facilities will be open for the Keystone Mission from 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM. The Keystone Mission will be required to have adequate staff on hand for the entire duration of the stay, and the rules, regulations for the mission will be implemented and enforced. Following the departure of shelter, Gas Director Fallon will have his Parks and Rec staff clean the gymnasium and restrooms. So that was just part of an update on, on this ongoing issue that's going on as well. And secondly, I just want to mention, we did receive this flyer from Neighbor Works, which is one of the best organizations we have in our city for helping homeowners. And this program particularly is for homeowners who are sixty and older, modest income, who need a helping hand. This summer, between June 24th and 28th, volunteer groups will be working in the city on projects, again, at no cost, such as porch repair and construction, steps repairs, interior and exterior painting, solar powered security lights, weatherization, and wheelchair ramp repair or construction. As I mentioned, it's for older homeowners, sixty or older. For a one-person household, the income limit is thirty, around thirty-seven thousand dollars. For a two-person household, it's forty-two thousand five hundred. And for a three-person household, it's forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty. The deadline to apply is March fifteenth. So anyone who's interested in applying for this program, if they need some, if they're older and need some work done on their house, free of charge, you can contact the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging at 570-963-6740, and request a Neighbor Works referral for the Summer 2019 Project. And I do want to give a thank you to Neighbor Works. They have been one of the best partners that the city has in our county in helping people achieve homeownership through the program that Councilman Evans and myself put together. And also for those who are older, who want to remain in their homes. Adaptations for people who have, who are older but need, you know, a helping hand, need ramps put in, need, you know, different lifts. And they've been a great asset, and Scranton has a very large population of senior citizens. So anyone that's out there that needs a little help on their home, if they, if you're older over sixty and you meet these income guidelines, please get in touch with the Area Agency on Aging or Neighbor Works. And that is all.
Five B for introduction and ordinance authorizing installation of no parking signs along the northerly and southerly sides of Broadway Street, along the bicycle lanes in the vicinity of the trail crossings near the University of Scranton Sports Complex that were installed in conjunction with the LHVA Scranton Safety Improvements Project.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction and resolution, appointment of Mary Pac DeFalleese, 1322 Schlegel Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A504, to the position of Executive Director, Office of Economic and Community Development, effective March 1, 2019. Ms. DeFalleese will be replacing Linda Abely, who is retiring, effective February 28, 2019.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction and resolution, authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit numbers as noted, Mulberry Street and Monroe Avenue, Hitchcock Court, Quincy Avenue, associated with the University of Scranton's project to further improve the safety of the existing pedestrian crossings.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five E for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an addendum to the agreement between the University of Scranton and the City of Scranton for the maintenance of the impavement LED crosswalk warning lights on Mulberry Street dated April 21, 2016.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title, file of council number 55, 2019, and ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right of ways necessary for the multi-bridge project, document number as noted.
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move item six A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, previously tabled. Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file of the council number 53, 2019, approving and accepting the submission of the City of Scranton's Office of Economic and Community Development's five-year revolving loan fund plan as required by the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption filed with Council Number 54, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to disburse $6,000 from the U-DAG repayment account into which urban development action grants repayments are deposited. This will cover the City of Scranton's share of costs for the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to administer the continuum of care for Lackawanna County during the period July 1, 2018 through, excuse me, June 30, 2019.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 97, 2019, appointment of Joseph J. Irish, 138 Lakewood, excuse me, Lakeview Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board, effective January 22, 2019. Mr. Irish is being appointed to a five-year term, which will expire on January 22, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven D legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 98, 2019, appointment of Kalina McNichols, 1310 Cornell Streets, Scranton, PA 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority, effective January 18, 2019. Ms. McNichols will be replacing Go Paul Patel, who resigned December 21, 2018. Ms. McNichols will fill the unexpired term of Go Paul Patel, whose term is scheduled to expire on January 4, 2022.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven E legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption Resolution Number 99, 2019, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Pocono Sign Company, 1979 Scranton Carbonell Highway, Blakely, PA 18447, for signage work to be completed on the front edifice of the Everhart Museum situated at 1901 Mulberry Streets, Scranton, PA 18510.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven F legally and lawfully adopted. There's no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.